You just type in and it'll say.
I shouldn't. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Sergeant at Arms, is lobby being cleared? Thank you. At this time, we request all electronic devices be turned off or put in silent mode. Also, please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. It is my pleasure to welcome you to the June 13th, 2023 school board meeting. The time is 6:01 PM, and this meeting is called to order. We'd like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest potential and the district's vision to be a world-class system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, pledge of allegiance, acknowledgements, recognitions, one item under public information, consent items, which include three items under Board Office, nine items under Academic Services, 10 items under Business Services, four items under Human Resources, one item under Information Systems, and nine items under Operations, one of which is Good Cause. Dr. Bernier, please provide an explanation for this one item.
Thank you, Chair Persons, members of the Board, members of the community. The item for consideration for Good Cause this evening is the demolition for the outer buildings at Fort Myers Beach Elementary School. It was added to the agenda as a Good Cause item in order to expedite Phase One of the project and to eliminate any further delays in moving forward with Fort Myers Beach Elementary.
Thank you. As providing officer, I find there is good cause to add this item to the agenda. And we have one item under the Attorney's Recommendations and four items under Good of the Order, Other Business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Mrs. Jordan?
I move to adopt the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Fleming. Please record your vote. The motion carries seven, zero. As is the custom of the Board, Ms. Jordan will lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, Ms. Patrica will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pastor Jerry DiOlio has been ministering for 15 years. He has been married to his lovely wife Beverly for 11 years. He is the father of two children, Josiah and Layla. Pastor DiOlio is the elder at Providence Church located at 5471 Lee Street in Lehigh Acres, Florida. He is the Men's Director at Verdi Pregnancy and Medical Resource Center. Pastor DiOlio, and I'm so sorry because I'm saying your name incorrectly probably, also serves as the chaplain for Fort Myers Mighty Muscles and the Florida Coast League Twins Rookie Affiliate. His favorite scripture is Jeremiah 29. "But if I say, I will not mention his word or speak any more in his name; his word is in my heart like a fire, a fire shut up in the bones. I am weary of holding it in; indeed, I cannot." The beauty of that passage is Jeremiah is complaining about how much grief ministry has brought him. He thought serving the Lord would be easy and realized it was the complete opposite. As he is complaining, he says that even though he has been overwhelmed with grief and affliction, he's unable to refrain from proclaiming God's glory. Such a beautiful reminder that ministry is hard and there is very little pageantry to it. But the Word has captivated us in such a way that we are unable to hold it in regardless of the dangers and the hardship we face. Please welcome Pastor Jerry DiOlio.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I just wanted to say real quick, I had to drop out when I was 14. My mother, my father left us. And to be here at a district meeting for the school board, to be able to lead the invocation is only the grace of God. So we're here because of the grace of God. This is not just a formality. Lord, Father, Son, and Spirit, thank you for your grace. Thank you for your kindness. Thank you for giving us access to your throne. Will we come to you, Lord, for guidance and wisdom, for strength? Will we bring our burdens? Will we bring our thoughts, our afflictions, our sadness and our joy? Father, as we come here before you, seeking your face to lead our community, to help our children, to help these families, Lord, may you grant us the wisdom to lead with love and grace. That truth may abide, that our ideas, that our policies, that the things, Lord, that are in our schools, may they bring you honor, may they bring you glory. May you give these men and women the wisdom, Lord, to live with righteousness, with love and with grace. May the conversations held in here today, may they bring you honor, may they edify, may they uplift, may they be conversations to help our children. We thank you for the privilege that you give us to serve you. We thank you for the privilege that you give us to serve our children. Thank you, Lord, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Next on the agenda are acknowledgements for the month of June. The character word for June is cooperation. Cooperation. Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much. From Helen Keller. The design you see displayed on the screen was created by Dalton Little, a 12th grade student at Mariner High School. The school board of Lee County acknowledges the following for the month of June 2023. It is Caribbean American Heritage Month. Board members, will you please join me in the pit for further recognitions?
Joining me at the lectern this evening is Dr. Jason Tomaszewski, Fine and Performing Arts Coordinator. Welcome. The Congressional Art Competition began in 1982 to provide an opportunity for members of Congress to encourage and recognize the artistic talents of their young constituents. Since then, over 650,000 high school students have been involved in nationwide competition. Students submit entries to the representative's office and panels of district artists select the winning entries. This year, the artwork of John Storm Childress of Estero High School has been selected to represent all of Florida Congressional District 19. His piece titled "Mother Otter Protecting a Baby from Alligator" will be on display in the U.S. Capitol for one year. Storm has also received a formal invitation from the U.S. House of Representatives Byron Donalds to attend an awards reception in Washington, DC. The school board and the superintendent are proud to recognize John Storm Childress for his talent and representation in the arts in Southwest Florida. Congratulations.
Joining me at the lectern is Executive Director for School Development, Mr. Clayton Simmons, and our Director of Athletics, Mr. Dave LaRosa. Apparently just Mr. Dave LaRosa is joining me at the lectern tonight. We are proud to recognize the 2023 Florida High School Athletic Association Track and Field State Champions. When I say state champion in the state of Florida, I understand this is the third-largest state in the nation. So these kids competed against some of the best in the entire country. The competition was held May 17th through 20th, 2023, at the Jack's Track at the University of North Florida in Jacksonville, Florida. The school board and the superintendent are pleased to acknowledge these athletes along with their coaches for their commitment, determination, and hard work that led to this outstanding accomplishment. School representatives, please join me when your school is announced. From Fort Myers High School, champion of the Class 3A Women's District Throw with a mark of 42.82 meters. If you're like me and you don't know meters, that's about 140.5 feet. Ms. Julia Lemon, congratulations. From Riverdale High School, champion of four state titles. In Class 4A, 100-meter ambulatory, time of 24.15; 200-meter ambulatory, time of 53.53; 400-meter ambulatory, time of 2 minutes 14.17 seconds; and javelin throw ambulatory with a mark of 7.75 meters. Joining me in congratulating Ms. Keel Castaneda. Congratulations.
Joining me at the lectern is Executive Director for School Development, Ms. Linda Muir. Very soon. Not here. I'll do it. Well, okay. Odyssey of the Mind is an international educational program that provides creative problem-solving opportunities for students from kindergarten through college. Team members apply their creativity to solve problems that range from building mechanical devices to presenting their own interpretation of literary classics. Students develop problem-solving, critical thinking, teamwork, math, language arts, science writing, engineering, and performing arts skills. After placing first at the Florida State Competition in April, the team from North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts qualified for the OM World Competition. This year, the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals took place at Michigan State University from May 24th to May 27th, under the direction of coaches Mary Ann Hodges and Agni Gatajouskate. The team from North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts placed third at the World Finals in Division II, Problem Number One, Pirates and the Treasure. The school board and the superintendent are pleased to recognize and extend their congratulations to these gifted and talented students and their coaches. Please come on up to be recognized and receive your certificate when I call your name. Macy Hodges. Isaiah Diaz. Elizabeth Clements. Aiden Bauer. Amy Bauer. Julia Humble. Congratulations.
Joining me at the lectern is Director of Exceptional Student Education, Ms. Teresa Bowen. Family Initiatives Annual Autism Acceptance Awards recognized and celebrated the everyday champions of the autism spectrum disorder community and their tireless efforts to promote inclusion, education, and impairment of the autism spectrum disorder community and beyond. Three of the five community heroes honorees this year include educators from the Lee County School District. The Believer Awards honors an individual or organization that effectively uses its resources for positively impact individuals and families with autism. The Champion Awards honors an individual who uses their resources for influence to advance the well-being of those on the spectrum or further understanding and acceptance of autism in the community. The Dylan Award honors an individual who has gone above and beyond for the autism spectrum disorder community and has served as an inspiration to others. This year, the school board and the superintendent are pleased to recognize Joe Pace, ESE teacher from Diplomat Elementary, as a recipient of the Believer Award. Joe was unable to be here this evening with us, but we want to congratulate him anyway. Krista Kazurzak, ESE teacher from Rema C. Page Elementary, as a recipient of the Champion Award. And Eileen Skorod, ESE teacher from Goff Elementary, as a recipient of the Dylan Awards.
Joining me at the lectern is Recruitment Director, Mrs. Suzette Rivera. This year, the school board entered into an agreement with TPG Cultural Exchange to attract and hire international teachers. The TPG Cultural Exchange is a U.S. Department of State designated D1 Visa sponsor for teacher exchange visitors. Teachers selected through the TPG Cultural Exchange meet certification requirements through the Florida Department of Education and are qualified to teach in our high-speed, high-need subject areas for up to five years. For the 2022-2023 school year, the district welcomed 21 teachers through the TPG Cultural Exchange Program. The school board and superintendent are very pleased to recognize the following teachers. When I call your name, please come up and be recognized. First is Erica Harz. She teaches English Language Arts at East Lee County High. Next up is Chizoba Onochi. From Nigeria, she teaches science at Fort Myers Middle. Josephine Baker. Josephine teaches English Language Arts. She is from Jamaica at Fort Myers Middle School. Next up is June Rae Rosasina. From the Philippines at Gateway High. Next up is Ricardo Jones. From Jamaica, teaches science, also at Gateway High. Next up is Joanna Iboah. Elementary teacher. She is from Ghana, Guana, at Harns Marsh Elementary. Next up is Simone Kirkland. Teacher from Jamaica, also teaching at Harns Marsh Elementary. Next up is Elijah Oluch. Is that right? He teaches, he's from Kenya. He teaches science at Harns Marsh Middle. Next up is Sashe, I'm sorry, Amos Sashe. Ghana, teaches science at Harns Marsh Middle. Next up is Maria Elizabeth Yan. Philippines. She teaches exceptional student education. At Harns Marsh Middle. Next up is Charles Darkwa. Teaches science and he is from Guana. Marsh Middle. Next up is Sharif. Oh, this is a tough one. Quankey. Teaches exceptional student education from Lehigh Acres Middle and he's from Guana. This is the tough one here. The next up is Ricky Nega Patan. A math teacher from the Philippines at Lehigh Acres Middle. Up is Jojo Alvarez. Teaches math from the Philippines at Lehigh Acres Middle. Next up is Kimberly Wallace, an elementary teacher from Jamaica at Lehigh Elementary. Next up is Nicole Martin, an elementary teacher from Jamaica at Lehigh Elementary. Next up is Cherry Casnaya. English Language Arts from the Philippines at Veterans Park Academy. Oz Apunda. Apunda. English Language Arts from Kenya at Veterans Park Elementary. Next up is Madeline Freya. In English Exceptional Student Education. At Veterans Park Academy. And last, but not least. Is Francis Agiman. Science teacher. At Veterans Park Academy. Thank you.
The school district of Lee County Parent University was created to increase the capacity of parents and guardians to be actively engaged in their child's education. In the third year, oh, yes, this is the third year that this program was offered to families of the school district. For the 2022-23 school year, Parent University provided five virtual learning sessions that included topics and activities for students of all ages and their families. In order to complete the program, participants must attend 75% of the sessions, which include a follow-up survey on topics presented. While we had hundreds of parents participate throughout the year, 19 parents presenting 21 schools completed the 2023 program. The names of these parents are also listed in the agenda item in the board docs and up on the screen, as we have the pleasure of recognizing a few of these parents representing some of our schools who are present here today. The Communications Department and Engagement Team have led the efforts to bring this program to our district families. I'd like to invite Ms. Irma Lancaster, Director of Communications, to join me at the lectern and help me recognize these parents. Please come up and be recognized. Jennifer Straley at Cape Crow Elementary School.
Thank you.
Thank you. Zaranara Galendez, North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts. Marta Cardona, Free Kay. And Zuni LaZan of Gee Weaver Hip Sunshine.
We'll take a brief recess if anyone recognition would like to leave and not have to sit through the whole meeting. While they're leaving, I'll just do a quick story. The international teachers had a picnic at the end of the school year, or towards the end of the school year. And the district bought some nice food for them and they all showed up with their native dishes to share with everybody, which was unexpected and not asked for. And they were just a great, great group to have fellowshiped with for a few hours one afternoon. So they're great and we're lucky to have them. It's on. I'm just not projecting quite loud enough. Okay, next on our agenda is the Hurricane Ian Community Update. Dr. Benir, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, no PowerPoint this evening. To the community, we're still in the middle of a very long-term process in terms of recovering. We are still making great headway with FEMA and with our FEMA consultant Imperium under the leadership of Susan Malley and a very excellent team that really does amazing work. We will tell you that all school roofs that were damaged as a result of Hurricane Ian all have proposals now in from our roofing vendors and they're being considered by the district and the repairs will be underway. Some of them will be starting as early as tomorrow, some of them as early as next week. The Hurricane Response Team, which is primarily our maintenance department, saw an additional 20 projects get completed last week. 14 additional schools had new projects commenced to repair damage for Hurricane Ian. And over the next three weeks, an additional 50 schools will begin their new repair work. Potentially with your action tonight, we'll also begin to move forward with Fort Myers Beach Elementary to that community. While the demolition should begin in earnest, they should have noticed that we've been out trying to capture their historic sidewalks. So we know there were some sidewalks out there that led to graduating classes. We are attempting to remove that concrete, but under the direction of our Chief Operations Officer, we are doing a short, quick opportunity to take a latex mold in case that when we move one, if we break it, we'll be able to replicate it. So excited about the progress. Fort Myers Beach Elementary, one of the ones left additionally potentially on the agenda tonight, and I'll mention in my comments, will be some movement again on Hector Cafareta and I'll have an update regarding a public-private partnership proposal that went out last week. So continuing to make headway, sir.
Thank you. I do believe the current class at the school went on with the tradition and had their handprints put in this year. So even though they're not in it right now, they didn't want to be left out. Okay, next on our agenda is public comment. Attorney DuPey Bruno, please address the item for us.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The school board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Please complete a public comment card and put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Concerns will be addressed by the superintendent or his staff as necessary, and the chair may comment as deemed appropriate at the conclusion of public comment. The superintendent may also comment if deemed appropriate. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on district issues such as duties, responsibilities, decisions, and the general operation of the district. The school board is viewpoint-neutral during public comment. We ask that decorum be kept and respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language such as cursing, insults, derogatory language levied against an individual or a class of people are prohibited. Further personal attacks such as name-calling are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing or a display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order by the board chair or the parliamentarian. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers by the sergeant-at-arms. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20, two minutes if there are 30 speakers, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown at the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call your names five speakers at a time. Please follow the staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chairman, there are 17 speakers that wish to address the board this evening. Three minutes per speaker.
Thank you. Please make sure you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. The card is our public record of identifying who is speaking. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but did not fill out a public comment card? Attorney Bruno, please proceed with the.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the following individuals please line up? Adam Weisberger, Dr. Paula Porter, Lori Brown, Kathy Horn, Sharon McGill. You can come on up. Just wait till the timer comes on. There you go.
Superintendent, council, and board members, good evening. My name is Adam Weisberger and I am the President of the South Gulf Football Officials Association. This year, we'll be celebrating our 51st year officiating high school football here in Lee County. And on behalf of the 75-plus men and women, I have the pleasure of leading. We are very appreciative for your consideration tonight of the service agreement for 2023-2024 under Item H9 of your agenda. I certainly don't have to tell you, any of you, that the cost of doing business has gone up in the last year. Whether it's higher insurance premiums, increased costs of technology, or even a ream of paper, the increases we see as a small association is not unlike the increased costs of the schools we serve. With that said, and as you've probably been briefed by board council, our service agreement in front of you today represents zero change in the terms of, or structure or fees as was in front of you last year. While I certainly can't guarantee that going forward, our Board of Directors was in unanimous agreement that with the change of our leadership, we want to show you and the schools that we serve that we are committed to continuing to build on the strong relationship we have had over the last half-century. Now, I know of the three teams that are on the field on any given Friday night, ours isn't the most popular. But while we are extremely appreciative of the hospitality that's provided by each of the member schools that host us each week, and we remain committed to ensure that high school football games in Lee County are contested fairly and officiated to the best of our ability. Finally, I'd like to personally invite all of you to attend our Fall On Field Officials Clinic, being held on Friday, August 11th at 6:00 p.m. at Dunbar High School. Gateway High School and Lehigh Senior High School will be the other schools participating, along with the host Dunbar, and they will participate in a controlled scrimmage and activities organized by us, which allows for our officials to get some final on-field reps in before the kickoff classics commence the following week. This will give you an opportunity to see the culmination of all the hard work and training that our members put in over the summer preparing for games and to support three local schools. Thank you for your time tonight and for your anticipated support on our agenda item.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Paula Porter, and for the record, I have a PhD in education instructional design, and I essentially teach teachers at the university level. First of all, I want to thank the board for their continued openness on the issue of books accessible to our children. I want to commend the Curriculum Advisory Committee for its outstanding efforts in putting together an objective and practical policy to review all books. This policy that is before you in the next few weeks is as objective as possible and follows the letter of the law in the Miller Test. This policy enables a fair and deeper review of two important qualities in the Miller Test: to review and read the entire book and judge it on its value, to inform, educate, inspire, and teach children. You should be proud that Lee County has strong members who have put together a policy that is far above what I have reviewed from many other Florida counties. Research throughout the years has proven that access to read a variety of topics and themes provided in books impact children's critical thinking skills by exposing them to new ideas and perspectives. perspectives, encourage them to question and evaluate information, and develop unique ideas and opinions. Reading a variety of books with different themes can help children develop empathy, creativity, problem-solving skills, all that we know are necessary for their adult lives. Providing books with diverse perspectives and ideas exposes children to different viewpoints as well as enhances their intellectual growth. Children's access to information and ideas presented in books will help them grow academically, intellectually, and emotionally. Finally, I don't know if any of you know this, but last Thursday, the U.S. Department of Education announced it as appointing a coordinator to take on the unprecedented issue of the removal of books in U.S. schools. The White House during this announcement indicated that when we limit access to books, it erodes our democracy, removes vital resources for student learning, and can contribute to the stigma and isolation of others. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lori Brown, and I'm here to request that you pay attention to the Florida statute. It's my understanding that it does not require an entire book to be read before a challenge form can be submitted. There are things in books that are on our bookshelves that our children have access to that they should not. It is up to you, our board members, to follow the law and to do it in a way that protects our kids. We trust you, and yet you are allowing things into their hearts and their minds that is causing extreme high rates of suicide, confusion, and mutilation to their bodies. I don't know how you can sleep at night knowing that those books are on those shelves with full access, and it needs to be limited. Pay attention to the Florida statutes. We're here, we are watching, and we will report. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Sharon McGill. Oh, sorry, Sharon McGill. I would just like to address additionally a few things from this afternoon. But first of all, I would like to thank the board and the superintendent. I noticed that on the official property records, the date that items were put into service was now on the list. So thank you for transparency. That really does help the public understand why these things are coming off of the record. So thank you very much for that. Now, I know you probably don't have it on your screens now, but I'd like to refer back to the Citizens Advisory Committee from this afternoon. And at your leisure, please look at the first paragraph, because unless I'm misunderstanding it, you're saying that the SAC is a School Board Advisory Committee, which with my understanding is not the case. But that's what it's saying in the first paragraph of that. So if you could please look at that again and make sure the wording and how it's actually stated in that paragraph, because it is confusing. The next thing is, this afternoon, we saw the social media presentation, which was incredible. I mean, it's so sad to see that that's what we've come to. And whether we go into litigation to recover dollars or not, I think that's not the real issue. The real issue is, how do we try to prevent this at the district level? We should be looking at this and going back and trying to find ways to help mitigate it so we don't have to get to litigation, so it doesn't get to that point. What are we doing to help our kids? And when I go home, I'm going to look up and see if there's a social media policy geared specifically toward that. And if there is not, I would certainly hope that we would consider including one in our policies. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Rosemary McBride, Joe Phillips, Jamie Merchant, Robert Roper, Madeline Stewart.
Hi, I'm Kathy Horn from Astero. Speaking to the book policy. You hire educated, qualified professionals to make curricular decisions. Trust them. That said, read the policy carefully. Read the updates carefully before you approve them. While challenges must be allowed, there must be a way to prevent repeated nuisance challenges, or you will all be reading many, many, many books and spending hours and hours in challenge reviews. Challengers should read the entire books to prevent cherry-picking of lines and to make sure they really understand exactly what they're challenging. Your policy should reflect that parental choice means a parent may choose what their own children may or may not read. Don't let a small group of parents who wish to restrict their own child's education limit choices for other parents. And in the spirit of the Constitution, don't allow one group's religion to force their ideas of morality on others who don't share their beliefs. There are many religions out there. There are many that support LGBTQ people and all diversity. These people have forced your staff to devote countless hours to this policy and will force them and you into countless more hours of distraction from the true purpose of education. Every time a book is challenged because of LGBTQ, African-American, or other marginalized groups' content, children who fit into these groups will be demeaned. Please support all your children. To quote author Judy Blume, "Let children read whatever they want and then talk about it with them." And as a final note, since I have time, I want to say to the subject of teen suicide, having been a teenager once, I can tell you that depression comes from being forced to, from feeling that you're ashamed because of who you are. And times have changed a lot since I was a kid, and I am grateful for that for today's children. And allowing diversity and encouraging kids to question and seek help and talk to people and read and see themselves in books and media discourages suicide and encourages confidence. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rosemary McBride. The following passages are from the Good Book, from Isaiah. "Their infants will be dashed to pieces before their eyes; their houses will be looted and their wives violated." From Exodus, "Whoever lies with an animal shall be put to death." From Jeremiah, "I will make them eat the flesh of their sons and daughters, and they will eat one another's flesh, because their enemy will press the siege so hard against them to destroy them." These passages reference themes of murder, stealing, rape, bestiality, and cannibalism. Do these and other similar passages mean that the Bible is without literary merit or value and should be removed from school libraries? Without context, a passage from a book doesn't convey the full meaning of the book as the author intended. To judge isolated passages from books as pornographic or distasteful is simply an exercise in misinterpretation. Thank you.
During the briefing meeting today, we had one agenda item that in a single statement repealed 205 existing tried and proven policies, followed immediately by an agenda item that was the first reading of 586 new policies. At first, I was relieved that first reading didn't actually mean that you were going to read them. It reminded me of the famous line in 2010 when Nancy Pelosi said, "You have to pass the bill to see what's in the bill." Then I thought of an executive order of the previous president, Executive Order Number 13771. I quote, "For every new regulation issued, at least two prior regulations must be identified for elimination." I will not ask if each of you has thoroughly read each policy, compared it to the old policy, and reading all the Florida statutes that are referenced in each of these policies to ensure that the policy meets the letter of the law. If you did all those things, my hat is off to you. But is it reasonable to think that the average citizen could do that? Change is hard, but I wish we could look at a reasonable number of policies in any one setting, that we could get back to red-letter highlight changes, that we could have each line numbered for easy cross-reference. But the thing that concerns me above all else is that the policies are not cross-referenced within for the procedures documents. There's no longer a cross-reference to related policies, and there's no longer forms linked in the policies. I don't even know where to start to find the compliance for how to comply with a policy without knowing what the process documents are associated with it. I don't even know how to do a public records request for that. In relation to challenge forms and reading a book, I support what Ms. Giovinelli said. Some people don't want their name on a challenge form, that they've read a book because they're a teacher or they're staff, or they're related to a teacher, or they're a grandparent or a great-grandparent. People don't want to be hassled or belittled, or they don't want their student harassed. I have been called during public comment, ward cleaver, pastor of darkness, extremist, intolerant extremist. My church has received some really hateful phone calls where people aggressively curse out my secretary. I could see why a person would not want to say that they objected to this book and that they read it in its entirety. When it says, "Did you read it?" I read that as, I could answer that yes or no. It's not a requirement. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you again. I want to first say kudos to your staff, to Dr. Spiro and his staff for a fabulous, and I can say that because I've read every word of it, policy on book challenges, and we know that it does comply with the law, and it is a fair and very sound policy. I want to just take a minute to talk about the state of education, public education. As you know, we're going through a time of upheaval and transition. Superintendents, teachers, and staff in public schools are under attack almost constantly. I want to share my concerns about how these well-orchestrated nationwide vitriolic attacks affect educational professionals, students, and our public education system. Anticipatory compliance is a concept that describes my concerns. I fear that well-trained, experienced school people will hesitate, will not be comfortable relying on their best professional judgment when making the hundreds of daily decisions that are part of any school and classroom. They won't be able to make these decisions because they fear reprisal if they make the slightest misstatement or mistake. We know that teachers are leaving the profession, and we heard this afternoon that here in Lee County, we need professionals, professional teachers. I fear this chilling effect will work its way into book selection and curriculum development, making the most bland and least interesting the norm so that any criticism, no matter how unfounded, is avoided. How do these attacks affect our students and their learning? A positive cooperative understanding relationship between the teacher and the parent, between the school and the parent, is central to any student's learning and growth. Every parent's concerns and questions should be discussed and resolved in a spirit of making the best decision for the individual student. If a parent makes a decision to deny their own student access to a book, that is their right. However, personal, highly negative public attacks on teachers and schools create a terrible conflict for students. This inhibits their learning, undermines their confidence in their own feelings, and worsens behavior. I urge those who take issue with the school to do so with respect for your own students' sake. And again, I and the people...
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Will the following individuals please line up? Eileen DeLuca, Bobby DeLassandro, Marge Cox, Robert Daniels.
Jamie Merchant. On May 17th, I attempted to send you all an email regarding my frustration of what seems to be lack of transparency in the community about what types of books are being challenged. In my email, I described a removed book brought up in the curriculum advisory meeting and used words like naked children and masturbation because that content was in the book. And for the record, I will correct myself and note the book is for ages 10-plus and not kindergarten. I was surprised, oh goodness gracious, I was surprised when I realized my email was blocked by your email servers because of the content. There were no pictures attached to my email, just words. On May 22nd, I revised my email to a very friendly G-rated version and received a few replies. So now I wonder how many book challenges have been missed because your email servers won't allow this content in an email thread. We can't bring this content to the attention of adults because it's bad or inappropriate, but children have this content available to them at their fingertips, and that seems odd to me. I wish the person in leadership reaching out to the community about people just trying to ban books from children actually told them what it was we were targeting. We're targeting sexual content. There are books that we challenged that have sexual content but were retained because the phrase contains literary value overruled the parts of the book discussing oral sex on a bus and more. In February of 2022, parents and community members stood at the podium and read passages from books being challenged. It didn't take long for then-chair Jordan to call a recess, and she was quick to give a content advisory warning for people listening online. This should be what is labeled as a community standard, but it fell on deaf ears. If I cannot send you an email that contains content in a book on district shelves, and if community members cannot read the passages aloud without a content warning, why do our children have access to the book without parental consent or any content warning whatsoever? Nobody is looking to ban Pete the Cat, Flat Stanley, Charlotte's Web, or the Lemonade Wars. I'm pretty sure you're catching my point. I hope we can all agree to protect the innocence of our young children and not hand them a book that normalizes sexual promiscuity. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eileen DeLuca, and I'm the parent of three children in Lee County Schools, and I've also been an educator for more than 28 years. I'm here to thank the teachers, the library media specialists, and other curriculum professionals who are working on the policy and also the process for the book media selection. I really value the work of educators and community members are doing to ensure the educational decisions are made by educators and that parents retain the right to make opt-out decisions for their own children. As an educator, I'm concerned that removing books from the library and classroom shelves is a slippery slope. I can tell you as a former high school teacher and also as a college professor, that successful students are students who read and read a wide variety of material. That is how they acquire advanced vocabulary, sophisticated syntax, and the ability to analyze text and synthesize meaning from a variety of texts. Students who read from all genres do well on assessments, become good writers, and demonstrate high-level thinking. These are the skills needed to do well in college and in life. If we start removing books from shelves because... If we start removing books from shelves because a few folks have concerns about certain topics, we cut off access to college readiness for students who may be interested in or connected to the topic. To use an example that came up in the curriculum meeting, if a student is interested in dragons and a few extremists are offended by dragons, removal of dragon books may be the very thing that turns a student off to reading. Conversely, if we offer students the ability to have a personal transaction with a topic that resonates with them, such as dragons, it may open up a love of reading that will support them as they read required novels, textbooks, and nonfiction. Also, we need to avoid the slippery slope of banning topics such as dragons, which then may empower extremists to ask for the removal of a book that include powerful female dragons, inspiring dragons from minority or historically marginalized groups, dragons who come from a low socioeconomic status, dragons who do not present as heteronormative, or dragons who want to protect academic freedom. This book challenge policy that you have all are going to approve at the next meeting continues to allow parents to make decisions about the content they do not want their own children to access, and also has a mechanism for citizens to request an ad hoc committee to review books they feel are inappropriate for all students and complies with statute. So again, we are grateful the work you've done. I am here to support you and the educational professionals of this district when you make sound, informed educational decisions for our children. We will be at all meetings that discuss book policy issues because we are a group of people in this community with children in the schools who want children to access books. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Attorney Bruno, Dr. Bernier, and board members. I'm here to speak about the policy 2522. I first want to thank the staff of Dr. Jess Ferro, who have listened to the many voices, and I mean, there's been many, in developing the challenge process, which will go along with your policy and the statute. We have felt heard and included in both the meetings with the staff and also the curriculum advisory committee. The staff has worked diligently to be sure they are aligning the process with the statute and your upcoming policy. You know, every county is allowed to make its own process, and the purple group has read the different processes in the counties, and believe me, they're quite varied. And I have to say that, and without prejudice, Lee County has developed the most fair policy that we have read so far, or processed. So congratulations to them. We also believe that the educational processes should be developed by our educational staff, and they're doing that. We really also firmly believe in parental rights, and I find it quite interesting that most of our book challenges are from the community and not our parents. One situation that I'd like to flag for you, which I think is very important in the future, there's a possibility that a situation will come to you where a book has been challenged both to the committee, then it will come to the board, and then it will go to the state. Now, do you know that they're going to request or make a proposal to request that if the state board decides to send it back on the library shelf, they want that book flagged forever that it had been challenged? Now, think about that manipulative process and how unfair that is once a book has gone through that process. So I'm wanting you to be thoughtful when considering this, and I just know and understand you'll always do the right thing for children, and that's all we're asking. Thank you so much.
Again, I'd like to say what I think everyone else has said, thank you for working so hard at your jobs, and thank you for supporting the professionals on your staff that are working very hard on their jobs. I've been so impressed with the curriculum committee meetings that I've attended. They're wonderful. The people on it are wonderful. I'm coming this evening because as I listen to the meetings, and there seemed to be some confusion over what would be appropriate. And so I started through the Florida statutes, started with 847.012, then I went through every statute number that was listed in that statute number, printed them out, read them. My head started to whirl around my shoulders and thought, what could I do to make something helpful to the process? And it seems to me like one of the things that would be helpful to the process would to look at book reviews where it lists age groups of what's appropriate. I've served 40 years in the public school system. There are definitely books that I would not have in an elementary library that would be appropriate in a high school library. Every book is not appropriate for every child, but if you can look at review sources that state this is appropriate for this age level, then that gives a starting point to be able to say, okay, this is something we can look at within that age level that's appropriate. I sent an email with five sources that are currently in print, Hornbook, School Library Journal, Kirkus, Book List, Publishers Weekly, all give book reviews consistently over books that are coming out to say this would be an appropriate book within this particular age range, not that it's particular for every age range. And I just think as we're looking for what's appropriate for kids, we need to look at the specifics of an age range, not just is it a good book or a bad book, but who is it written for, who's the audience? I appreciate so much the hard work you've done, and I appreciate what your curriculum committee has done, and the policy is good. My suggestion would be I would add to it and order two professional sources that show a review for that book. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Well, the following individuals, please line up. Marian Hodges, Kristy Divagili, and Susan.
My name is Robert Daniels. I hadn't planned to speak on this, but as a young man who was inspired by books about dragons, it did nothing to crimp or derive or discourage me from reading books when I didn't hear about the nitty-gritty of the maiden practices of dragons while I was reading about those swords in sorcery novels. What I did intend to talk to you about was a little bit about the law of unintended consequences, Murphy's Law, and the Dunning-Kruger effect. Last time I was here, there was mention made compared the use of artificial intelligence to the introduction of cell phones to classrooms. I have the unique experience of having been in school through the entire development of cell phones, from the Nokia brick that you could kill somebody with, throwing it at them, to the latest smartphones, the iPhones, all of that. When cell phones first came into the classroom, you know, we thought it was just for easier communication, our students were safer, parents could get a hold of them, tell them when plans changed, easier than calling the front office. The unintended effect, though, was that it reduced the independence of students and enabled what we refer to as helicopter parents. Then came the development of smartphones. What used to be 100-year-old technology that was now in the palm of your hands was now 10-year-old technology, the internet, in the palm of your hand, always there. When I was in teacher college, we thought that these would be tools to enhance learning and increase student accessibility. What it actually turned into, well, you already know, social media run rampant, students being depressed, destroying their self-image, but more importantly, it removed and devalued knowing things. It ripped the bottom of Bloom's Pyramid right out of things. Students no longer care about knowing things, they don't need to care about knowing how to do things, for that we have Google and YouTube, so I don't need to learn about it now when I'd rather be doing something else, which begets behavioral issues. Because we all know that engaging a student in a lesson they don't care about because they can just look it up on Google later is one of the hardest things you can do, not to mention the other issues such as eating Tide Pods and the devious lick phenomenon, which caused how much damage to our schools? The artificial intelligence threatens to rip the top off of Bloom's Pyramid, removing evaluation, synthesis, creativity from the process that our students go through. How are they going to learn to judge, evaluate, synthesize when they can type a prompt into a district-provided program that will split out an essay that has done all the hard work and thinking for them that they simply need to revise and plagiarize and submit? And before any of you think that we don't already provide it, there is a program called Pack Back that myself and a few English teachers have tested. We submitted a prompt and got back an A-quality essay that we couldn't prove was AI-generated.
Good evening, Dr. Bernier, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Marian Hodges, and I'm going to admit I'm terrified to be here right now. I'm going to start with thank you for everything that you guys do. A little bit about me, I've resided in Lee County for 21 years, I've taught in Lee County schools for 15 years, and I've been a mom for 14. This is going to sound really small compared to all the big things that you guys do, but I wanted to share about the process that I've been through in the last few months through student assignment and trying to get my current eighth-grade-going-and-ninth-grade daughter enrolled into the school that works for me. On behalf of other teachers, I'd like that you guys consider adopting a policy that allows teachers to have their own children placed in schools that works well for them with the expectation that we provide our own transportation in an era where it's really difficult to staff our schools. I feel like this is a free, somewhat manageable perk that we could work the kinks out to offer to teachers and maybe even encourage some to stick with the profession. Seven years ago, I got a teaching position at North Fort Myers Academy for the arts solely for the purpose of getting my East Zone daughter placed at the West Zone school that offered an arts program and full-time gifted because that is what would suit her needs at the time. And until today, when my daughter's waiver was approved, thank goodness, I was ready to do the same thing again because I'm certified to teach high school as well and was ready to just go teach at North High where she could participate in the programs that she's been building up over the last three years in middle school. I don't believe, though, that this is what's best for students. The process that I was going to go through for my own daughter has teachers uprooting themselves from a craft that they've been refining for years just to go teach in a different area for the sake of their own child's placement. I've seen many teachers leave the school where I currently work to do just that for their own children, and it has created holes in our school that have been really hard to replace. The clubs and programs that teachers cultivate in their schools where they've been working end up abandoned without someone to carry them on. In my own case, I've been teaching fourth grade for seven years and elementary school for 13. I'm an OM coordinator, and I'm going to run out of time. I've done a lot of things at my school, and I didn't want to leave all of those programs just for getting my kid into the one where I felt like she needed to be. Unfortunately, like I said, many other teachers do this. Some even go to the extreme of lying about their permanent addresses just to play the student assignment game, and I wasn't willing to do it. Like I said, thankfully, it worked out in this case for my daughter, but I'm just one example of many. So again, I'd like to ask you to adopt a policy that allows teachers to have their children placed at a school that works best for them, granted that we...
There was a woman that mentioned things that can cause depression, and I can tell you another thing that causes depression, and that's when you have a child on the autism spectrum, and they have to take home stacks of schoolwork that they couldn't cope with doing in school, year after year after year. Our years in the Lee County School District have been a disaster from the beginning, especially once my son needed an IEP. Jumped to freshman year in Ida Baker, I begged the guidance counselor to hold my son back a year, and his response was, if we held back all those needing to be held back, we'd have a high school full of 20-year-olds. So, parents, I'm talking to you, if you're watching from home. This is how kids are pushed through each year, unprepared for the next step. Parents, the Lee County School District does not teach the way many of our kids learn, and some still slide through, still unprepared with study skills for further education. In senior year at North Fort Myers High, administration invited me to remove my son from school. He was maybe not making their school look good. Send him to North Nicholas High School, they said, which is more of a completion school. Already feeling rejected after a short attendance, he felt the atmosphere was not the school for him, while I was alarmed that he voluntarily withdrew. My son enrolled himself at Northern Palms Charter High School. He did this all on his own. There he was met by a few huge-hearted staff who vowed to get him through. Finally, a school that was pleased that his parents were in regular contact about his progress. One week, they actually passed out raffle tickets each day a student was present. Wouldn't you know that by Friday, my son won a flat-screen smart TV and was over the moon because he's never won anything in his life? The message here is it pays to get to school and get focused. What an added incentive they had in an idea for daily support, along with their staff, their excellent staff. On Saturday, June 3rd, we finally watched my son walk across the stage as a high school graduate. A year late, but who gives a rip? The pride we all feel is immeasurable. In retrospect, the Lee County School District has many problems they refuse to address and resolve. Very quickly, any parents that have kids in high school that can relate to what I'm saying, I urge you to transfer to one of the two charter high schools so that...
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you not want me to finish?
Kristy Divagili, I'm going to start with the good stuff. Thank you, Board Member Fleming, for suggesting an opt-in for comprehensive health education in today's workshop, although it was ignored, I appreciate it. Also, thank you to Board Member Persons for your recommendation we have committee meetings to audio recordings opposed to simply just relying on minutes. We all know how well that's worked in the past, so thank you for that. Now, off to the not-so-fun stuff. There's a saying that goes something like this, "People have two tongues, one in their mouth and one in their shoe. Ignore what they say and watch what they do." I've been sitting back and watching since the installation of our new board. I've been watching the district staff to see how, when left in their hands, they will respond, and exactly what type of pressure is necessary for appropriate action to take place. Will they follow up with scheduling meetings they agreed to schedule, or will I have to hound them? Who are they currently catering to, and why? This brings me to the challenge books process. First off, no one is disagreeing with kids reading books about dragons. Parents, however, are disagreeing with kids reading books about drag queens. There's a difference. Some purple in the room may think it's perfectly normal to provide content of that nature to other people's children, but as a parent, let me remind you that you have no right exposing my children to any of it. But like so many purple mentioned in the room tonight, it has only been community members submitting forms so far. So rather than complaining, me and other parents like me are ready to do something about it. Let me move on to a teacher at my daughter's school, also North Fort Myers High School, had her students put her classroom library books in a closet the week before school ended because they didn't want to scan and catalog them. Is this the type of behavior we should expect from teachers throughout the district that don't want to catalog and scan their classroom library books because they don't want that content to be seen by anyone but their students? I'll finish by saying, kudos, Dr. Spiro. Thanks for being such a team player.
Mr. Phillips, are you going to speak?
I'd like to thank the board today for allowing me to speak as my capacity as an advocate and a translator for these ladies. These ladies are employees of Bonita Springs High School. They want to submit to the record that they feel that they have been treated unfairly and discriminated against during their employment with Lee County School District. Now, the one passage, I promised the district I'd be short, but I do want to read one quote from this, and I think the board owes it to these ladies to read this entire letter. And please, I want it a matter of record. On Friday, June 9th, 223... On Friday, June 9th, 2/23, the administrative staff called each of us individually into the second-person summon during the meeting. I was shown pictures and accused of inadequate performance. Now, later on, they wrongfully accused me of actions I did not commit. They presented me with a blank, a blank piece of paper demanding that I sign it. When I expressed hesitation to do this due to the nature that it was blank, they coerced me into signing it saying that I would not be allowed to leave to end the distressing ordeal. I left the office in tears, deeply upset. Now, I'm telling you, I'm as an advocate on this, I have no real knowledge on this, but if this is true, y'all owe this to these ladies. Some of them were terminated. And if I could, I would like to enter this now, please. Again, I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak on behalf of Rosalindo Sisnos, Maria Flores, Dosse Flores, and Juana Garcia. And thank you, board, for allowing me this time for these ladies. Thank you, ladies. My time now, please? Let me get it together before you start me. Okay, I'm ready, ma'am.
Ms. Roman, reset the time, please.
Thank you, I'm Smokin' Joe. The Lee County School District performed below the state average in all but one testing category, fifth grade science, where the district performed on par with the state with a 48% of students receiving passes, passing score. There's no excuse for Lee County not to exceed the state average. We can do better. This is a direct quote from Armor Persons on July 5th, 2022, during his campaign, I might add. So I've asked you, are we doing better? Viral videos of middle school students fighting, teachers arrested for abusing children, administrators covering up for family members who brought drugs into our schools, multiple accounts of sexual abuse, yet you would have us to believe that Armor is an educational utopian. Armor said no excuse, but has not visited these troubled schools in his district. Instead of addressing the real problems, this district wants to silence the parents and community members. In so many ways, this district has failed us. A mother contacted me with concerns regarding her child's 504 plan. This reflects a failure in your ESC department and our schools for failing to provide the best in education. This board continues to boast of their accomplishment. Recently, a member received the Pineapple Award, which is a benefiting name for a pineapple releases tiny needles that causes temporary ulcers in the mouth. The needles are eventually expelled and become feces and this board seems to need a laxative. Violating our First Amendment rights in order to stop your misdeeds from being exposed will bring on another lawsuit against the district and quite frankly, the board attorney's ego will cost the taxpayers more and more money. This board is pushing for a fantasy narrative that they need to protect us from the community with, in fact, we are trying to protect the children from you. Again, you have turned speak up, listen up, to shut up and cover up. Again, thank you for earlier.
Ms. Chairman, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. I would like to mention one thing that was brought up earlier. On all the policies that we are going to be getting rid of and adding the new policies, that process has been going on well over a year. The whole board was meeting with Neola, going over policy. My policy staff has been doing that. So it's not all done in one meeting, so I just wanted people to know that. All right, next on our agenda is the consent actions. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Superintendent, would you like to make some comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank this community for its public input that led to this particular part of our process. In the past, everyone's had to sit and wait for the end of a meeting in order for a response to some of the issues. I will not be able to respond to all because some of them I'm hearing about for the very first time. That being the case, I always find it better to continue to gather facts and before making a decision. So to the young women that were present with Mr. Phillips, I want to say that we'll look deeper into it. Thank you for providing the information. We have organizations that will dig deeper and find out what actually transpired. As to, I will come back to books at the very end. As to the mom of a North Fort Myers High School student who wound up at a charter school, first of all, I will say, and I don't mean this facetiously, congratulations that your son found the option that allowed him to graduate from high school. I wish that option had been us. I will have my team look into that matter once we get Ms. Susan's last name. Regarding policy for our teachers, it is already something that we're planning to have. We've already discussed in human resources to talk about a policy that will allow our teachers some latitude when it comes to placement that will help stabilize some of our school buildings where they would like to stay. It makes complete sense. However, it will alienate another group of a diverse community. Those will be parents who want that seat. So just that's going to be my segue to the book process. I will tell you that there is so much similarity in this room and there's so much difference. I think we have to focus on what our similarities are. This school district will follow the law. Books are key to learning and I heard that from the diverse speakers tonight. Reading is the gateway to all other subjects, writing, math, science, social studies, physics, et cetera. They are the key to knowledge because you first learn to read and then you read to learn. The diversity of our community is our strength. And to our staff and our community for all the hard work that they put in because it was a joint effort in the curriculum council's meetings. It was not just staff. It was just not people in a colored t-shirt and it was just not people who believed something else. It was a good selection of our community. Additionally, some people have had the opportunity, not only to address it in community council meetings and curriculum council meetings, but they have the opportunity to also address it with a superintendent, with individual board members, and with staff. We've provided open doors to this process since my arrival, just a year, just a little over a year ago. We will comply with the power, with the law, and respect the power of our parents. Our parents do have parental rights, but as I said tonight in the briefing, this morning, this afternoon in the briefing, with parental right comes parental responsibility. We must place ourselves in a position where our parents are empowered to exercise those rights and responsibly advocate for their children. That's what they did tonight in the case of an ESC student. That's what they did tonight in the case of a teacher looking for an opportunity for people to stay. And that's what many of you did tonight as we look forward to determining the procedures that align with the policy. I would like to take a second to just remind everybody that public comment does work. I would like to go back and address Ms. McGill. Ms. McGill was the one who asked us with property records to ensure that we put the correct date of when that item was purchased so we could make some determination as to how long that lifespan was. There's many other examples of how public comment have worked in this community. I'm glad that we have this opportunity to listen to the public. I've taken copious notes, as I always do, to my board. I will assign staff members, not only to Ms. Hodges, but to Ms. Susan, and we will continue to work with our team and our community to reach a fair assessment and a fair process regarding books, the access to them, and while respecting the diversity of this community, determining how you as a board would like to move forward. So thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair, to address.
Thank you. Mr. DuPuy Bruno, do you have any comment?
No, I do not. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Next is the approval of action items under the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the material and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed and/or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business or table items? Mr. Fisher?
I have no set items, Chair.
Mrs. Javonelli?
I have none, thank you.
Mrs. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I have none, thanks.
Mrs. Langford Fleming?
I have none.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none, thank you.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda consent items with the... Yes, Ms. Jordan?
I move to approve the agenda items, consent items as written.
Thank you.
You have me confused now.
I know. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Morgan? It's been moved by Ms. Jordan and seconded by Ms. Morgan. Please record your vote. The motion carries 7-0. Dr. Bernier, would you please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment that was approved under the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair and board members, it would be my honor to do so. First, would like to recognize with an appointment Melissa Whittington, who will be working in professional standards as a coordinator for professional standards. Under change of assignment, Brittany Fox, Location in Curriculum and Instruction, Innovation in Elementary, will become the new coordinator in teaching and learning. Transfer or change of assignment, Joy Marks will be joining us in accountability research and assessment as the new Director of Accountability Assessment and Research. Casa Dit Tipiosu will be joining us in infrastructure services as the coordinator for informational technology and technological support services. Finally, in attendance is Michael Harris. He'll be joining us also in professional standards as a coordinator for professional standards. Chair, if I might, I would like to remind everybody in the audience, especially those individuals who just stood, whether school-based or central A office-based, we have a great responsibility to the children and the parents of this community. You've heard them in debate tonight discussing their viewpoints and we have a responsibility in a speak-up, listen-up culture to not only speak up as employees and for me to listen up, but more importantly, for all of us to be listening to all of them. No matter whether you're supervising one or 20 people, there's a clear expectation that as a good supervisor and as a good leader, you will spend the time listening to your people. So I would also ask you at this point to listen to your family tonight because that is an amazing support structure that you have gathered with you this evening and I would ask your family members to wrap their arms around you, give you one big hug because there's going to be a lot of work between now and when school opens. Take a good look at them. It's not like we're sentencing them away, but there's a lot of work to be done and some of these vacancies have been around for a while and we're looking forward to making progress on those projects. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Attorney DuPuy Bruno, would you please make your recommendation?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This evening, I'm asking the board to approve the attorney-client engagement agreement with Wagstaff and Cartmel LLP and co-councils Beasley, Allen, Crowe, Metvin, Portis, and Miles, Gosa, and Honels, and the mayor law firm in order to engage in the legal representation of the board to pursue claims for damages associated with social media litigation such as claims against Facebook, Meta, Instagram, Snapchat, TikTok, YouTube, and Google, as well as other defendants that are deemed appropriate and in the best interest of the school board. There is no cost to the district unless a monetary recovery is obtained by council in favor of the school board.
You've heard the attorney's recommendation that the board approves the attorney-client engagement agreement with Wagstaff, Cartmel LLP, and co-councils Beasley, Allen, Crowe, Metvin, Portis, and Miles, Gosa, and Honels, and the mayor law firm to engage in legal representation of the board to pursue claims for damages associated with social media litigation such as claims against Facebook, Meta, Instagram, Snapchat, TikTok, YouTube, and Google, as well as other defendants that are deemed appropriate and in the best interest of the board. There is no cost to the district unless a monetary recovery is obtained by council in favor of the board. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Ms. Jordan?
I move to approve the attorney's client engagement agreement regarding social mediation litigation.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Morgan?
Okay, Ms. Morgan? It's been moved by Ms. Jordan and seconded by Ms. Morgan. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Yes, please. I'm sorry, it didn't come up on my thing.
Motion carries 7-0. Next on our agenda is go to the order and other business. Board members' comments and reports. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Chair. Keep it brief. Had a great visit over at the new LaMille Teale Middle School last week, a great walk around and seeing what they're accomplishing over there. Principal Fosino's doing a great job and I'm really excited for them. So it was a great time and I look at especially the business focus they're looking at. It was very impressive. So congratulations on the chair on his award that was aforementioned, I believe, by Board Member Patrica, Community and Family Award. I appreciate you representing this district well. Want to thank everyone for their appointments tonight as well as people service the district. I would like to point out something. We have a retirement for the end of this month from a person that is very special to this district and that's Dr. Denise Carlin, who has been here for over 30 years and I've only gotten to know her over the past couple of years. She is an amazing person. She's been at every level from teaching to being a principal to being an administrator. So she's been a mentor to many of us, I know myself included. So she has been a true, true asset to this district. So I'm going to truly miss her and she is one of the things that has really helped me and I know others be able to perform this job. So I don't think we would have been as successful legislatively this term without Dr. Carlin's help. So I just wanted to personally thank you for everything and I'm going to miss you seeing here in the meeting. So thank you, Dr. Carlin. That's all my comments for tonight, Chair.
Mrs. Javonelli?
Thank you for that, Mr. Fisher. And actually, I just want to wish you a blessed retirement. I'll just piggyback off that a little bit. Just thank you for your service of Lee County. We truly appreciate it. Thank you. Dr. B, I just want to thank you also for you addressing the issues that, and then thank this board for giving you the direction, but all of us working together to address the issues of the people when they come forward. I also have trust and faith that you will help those employees at Benita Springs- I also have trust and faith that you will help those employees at Benita Springs. I think that Mr. Phillips spoke for them, but I think there might be a language issue. So I hope that you'll have a translator and can resolve that issue. So I really appreciate that you spearheaded those, all those, the things that were brought up tonight. Also, I just want to real quick, I just wanted to remark about the international teachers' recognition. I thought that was kind of, that's very new for the district. This is the first year that we did that, and I mean, I just, I can't express how valuable I think that was and is, and I'd love to see that grow. And I just want to thank all those employees. I don't know how long they can even stay here. Maybe only one year. I don't really understand all that. If you could shed a little light on that, it would be awesome.
I'd be happy to. They have an additional year at least, their J-1 visa, so they're not here for a one-and-done stay.
Right.
And then we have another, through the recruitment efforts of the Human Research Department and Suzette Rivera, we have another 30 additional teachers that'll be choosing to hang their shingles here in Lee County. When I say their shingles, their professional certificates to teach here in Lee County. So there'll be 30 additional members from the international community joining Lee County to lend their expertise to our classrooms.
Thank you, because I really enjoyed that tonight, and they, you just saw that they brought their own uniqueness and their individualities of their countries with them, and I just think that spoke volumes, and I think the education side of that for our children is going to speak volumes on that. I've had exchange students in and out of my home for many years, and that's always just been a wonderful experience for me and my family. So I encourage people to get to know these teachers from these other countries and make friends, because it's really a nice opportunity. I just wanted to bring up real quick, and just for the board, because we haven't really talked about it, and probably should have brought it up, go to the order regarding RSM. We just renewed their contract tonight, and I'm very excited about that. However, I still feel like we're missing an element of an in-house auditor that would deal with RSM, and with us losing our opportunity as appointing a superintendent and going to an elected superintendent, we're going to need that extra, I believe, level of an in-house auditor to facilitate and work with RSM. And I don't know how that, what that looks like. That's something that this board could talk about, but I would like to bring that up for a conversation for the future, sooner than later, because the elected superintendent situation is right around the corner. And I just think that the statute requires us to have one, and yes, RSM fulfills that, but we were not receiving all the updates regarding RSM. I had to ask for them. I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but I think that that was an issue. If we had an in-house auditor, we would be able to have them facilitate and communicate back and forth with us at RSM versus having to go through staff and them being able to pull the information, and there was just a little time lag there because of working through staff. So it's something we need to talk about, and we don't have to talk about it now, but I wanted to bring this up. I've actually spoken to the superintendent and Ms. Bruno about this, and I put it on our protocols and policy regarding that in asking for, you know, when we were asking for updates and so forth recently with Dr. Savage. So I think it's something that we need to talk about. And then I don't know Susan's last name. I think it starts with a C, the parent. And I just want to congratulate her personally, because I know the advocacy that she has done and fought for her son in, over the years, and I am very proud of her and him that he graduated this year, and I wish him much success in his future endeavors, and I know that he will succeed with a parent that works and advocates for him, as she has. And so I really appreciate that and respect that, and I just want to give her that kudos, because as a mom, she's fought very hard for her son. So I just, she's not here, I think she left, but I just wanted her to know personally that I see and have seen her fight for her son, and I appreciate it. And parents, that's what we're put on this earth to do. When you have a child, you better fight for him and advocate for him, and that's how I got here. So thank you. Have a good evening.
Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. So in response to a lot of the public comment tonight, somebody said that the removal of books from schools was unprecedented. My understanding of history is that it is not unprecedented, that it is precedented, whatever. History does repeat itself, and I see it repeating itself here. I just watched a documentary about Judy Blume, and this was happening when I was a kid in the 80s. So we have approximately 102,000 titles in our schools that are maintained by the district. One of those books has been removed, one of 102,000. I've heard some members of the public point to that book as proof of a flawed system by our media specialists. That is 0.001% of the titles in our libraries. Put another way, that is 1/1,000 of a percent. That is statistically irrelevant. As a board member, that's what I do. I look at data. I don't look at individual cases. I look at data, and I hold the superintendent accountable for results. The whole book banning slash removal slash restriction movement, whatever you want to call it, in my opinion, is a perversion of conservatism. I am a conservative. As a conservative, what I fundamentally believe in is the rule of law, and I fundamentally support the rule of law. I believe that most often, book challenges, if successful, actually violate the First Amendment. The purpose of the First Amendment is to protect ideas that some may find offensive in the name of Christianity, morality, protecting children. I fear that some are trying to violate the First Amendment. Some are also attempting to violate parents' rights by restricting the availability of books for all students. It is not our right to determine whether other parents are engaged enough in their child's education. It is not our right to determine whether other parents have fully vetted the content of a book. Parents' rights are parents' rights whether we agree with how they are exercised or not. I'm proud that Lee County supports the First Amendment, the rule of law, and the rights of all parents. I fear that too much staff time will be wasted by book challenge after book challenge after book challenge, only to find a 1/1,000 of a percent rate of error. I fear that time wasted on reviewing books would be far better spent individualizing education for our students, providing rich, meaningful training for our staff, our amazing teachers, or improving family engagement in our schools. That's it on my comments about books. I'm going to dovetail on Mr. Fisher's statement a little bit by celebrating another employee who is retiring, and this is the last time this board has to hear me gush about Leslie Gunderson. Leslie Gunderson is a lot of things. Most of us here know her as an educator and administrator. She is also a wife, a mother, a grandmother, and a very accomplished runner. I met Leslie 11 years ago, when I walked onto Pinewood's campus for the very first time with my children. We were new to Florida, Lee County schools, and Pinewood's. Leslie greeted us at the door and introduced herself to my third-grade daughter by sharing that they were both the new girls. We immediately felt at ease because of Leslie's welcoming presence at that front gate. About halfway through that first year, Leslie hired me as a paralegal. Leslie was a wonderful boss. She was clear about her expectations. She provided solid, constructive feedback, and she always has her staff's backs. She advocates for those that work for her. She always strives to have a highly productive and supportive work culture. She does have very high expectations, which brings out the best, in my opinion, in everyone around her. As a parent, Leslie was a dream principal. She had an open-door policy that made her very, very accessible to everyone in the school. It didn't matter whether the issue was big or small. She was always available to her parents, and in a school of over 1,000 students, she knew those kids really, really well. If I had children, my own children, who were struggling with behavioral or academic issues, I could call Leslie at any time, and she was always willing to provide feedback that was in the best interests of each of my children individually. At times, Leslie helped me with my own children's behavior, both at school and at home. It is not an exaggeration, and I know I've said this at this table before, that Leslie Gunderson made me a better mother, because of her willingness to provide guidance when it was most needed. Finally, as a school board member, I can say that Leslie is one of the best leaders I have seen in any organization. Leslie has two daughters. That's the filter that she uses when she made decisions at that school. She would not implement anything at Pinewood's unless it was good enough for her own two children. In this regard, each child that went to Pinewood's Elementary had the support, guidance, and comprehensive education programs that Leslie would want for her own children. I really don't think it gets any better than that. So Leslie will be missed for sure. I wish her the best of luck, much health and happiness as she retires, and maybe she will be able to sleep in now on occasion. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
That was very sweet. Just saying, thank you. Well, some of you have already shared some of the things that I was going to bring up again for Denise. Dr. Carlin, wish you the very best. I know this is a small town, so you're not going anywhere. You will be seen out there. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Jeff Wagner, who will be leaving us. Thank you for coming and sharing your expertise and your knowledge with us, getting us through Ian, almost through Ian. We appreciate you. We know we have to give you back to your wife, but we really appreciate you being here with us, so thank you so much for being with us. I also wanted to state too, RSM, I agree with, that is a conversation that we, I would like to have as well, some consideration regarding an in-house audit, but I know that RSM was sending their information, however, it was just not getting to us. But it was absolutely being sent. So I want to make sure that they were getting credit for doing the work. FSBA, thank you, Ms. Morgan, for sending us your, the FSBA, which you had gone through. I hadn't had the opportunity to do that yet, but we did have that this past weekend. I went to several meetings, The Guardian, and I'll put something together too, so I'll be able to share with you. We had conversations with the mid and large districts, which was really, I think, beneficial. They shared some nuances on what they use for keeping their transportation going and keeping employees, which I thought was, and I know Ms. Javonelli was there as well, but they shared quite a bit, and I think that that's something that we could possibly even look at, and I'll be sharing all that with you as well. Actually, Dr. B. and I had an opportunity to present there that was interesting. So we presented on communication is the most important, most essential element to productivity, working relationship between a board and superintendent. And I think our rooms were packed. We filled the rooms, so I don't know if that's good or bad, but we did our jobs there. It was a great opportunity. And then, you know, and I also just want to say, we had an update by the Representative Tuck on HB 1, you know, telling us what is coming, you know, as much as they possibly could share with us, they were sharing. I do want to thank everybody who did come today to speak. We absolutely appreciate that. I do, and I want to always hear what you all have to say. Mr. Weisenberg, Weizen, and I'm sorry that I misheard your name, the umpire, the coach. I would love to, I would love to be there that, to learn what you all do. I think that's really important for us to learn what takes place, so that way we have some type of knowledge as well. And then last, wish everybody a great summer, and please don't forget that we do offer our summer break spots, so even though we're not in school, we do have areas, and it's on the website, where children can get, still have food. So please make sure that you look at our website. We have a lot of great information on that. We are looking for advisory committee members that we truly, truly need. So please go on there, fill out your information, and please be a part of the solutions, and appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Langford Fleming?
Yes, Mr. Weisberger. I do know how hard umpires and refs work, and especially in the state of Florida, from about now until November, because that turf and that field is hot. So thank you. Plan on being at the clinic just to hear a little bit more about what all of you, what all you do. Mary Ann Hodges, thank you first of all for all that you do for the district and your students every day. I have, as a former educator, I've always thought, and my own children went to school with me, and that was such a perk of the job, until they went to middle school. So that was a hurdle I had never crossed before, when your children are with you from K through 5, and then you enter middle school, and then you have to go through the school choice that you hear all the other parents talk about. So I've always thought that would be such a great incentive for teachers, and they work so hard for our district, and I know that the superintendent's going to work hard to try to make that happen, so, and the team. But as he stated before, it's a seat someone else gives up, but I feel like somehow we're going to figure that out for our staff. So, but something I probably should have brought up this afternoon, it was a four-hour meeting with policies and such, so might as well just bring it up this evening. Something that's been on my heart, I do believe that the school district reflects the values and the principles of the community. This desire for change is made abundantly clear throughout the last election cycle, and as a new board, we have been making great strides in the first few months, I do believe. But one thing that has bothered me since becoming a board member, I do not feel like it effectively represents the community, is our district mantra slogan, tagline, personal, passionate, and progressive on our printed materials and website. While, yes, we are passionate and personal, progressive is often associated now with a political ideology and has no place in defining our district. None of the words that actually focus on what our top priority are in our mantra, and that is educating students. So our purpose is to make sure our students receive the best education possible while in our schools. Therefore, I would like to ask the board to develop a new slogan that better represents what we are all here for. This can be a work in progress. I would defer to the superintendent on the best way to go about this, but I do think having it changed for the 23-24 school year is important.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I could offer the board one particular solution to at least having a deeper dialogue. We're getting ready to bring the strategic plan and all the work that we've done from the two retreats to you, so that you can begin the examination of not only the strategic plan, but the outcomes and the scorecards. I think that would be a most appropriate place to continue to entertain that particular discussion. If it's the board's favor, I'm seeing nods of heads. That's, I'm not seeing any heads going the other way yet. So if I don't hear that before the end of the meeting, I will direct Mr. Savage to add that to our workshops and our continued dialogue.
Thank you. The only other thing is, I just thought I would tag off one more time as to just how much I appreciate Dr. Carlin. I know it's not quite here yet, but I kind of want time to slow down a little bit for the next few days, even though you wanted to speed up. So we've had many conversations about how much I appreciate all you do, and I just thought it was so nice tonight to hear from the superintendent, right after public comments, so those people could hear your thoughts. So I appreciate you, I appreciate the board putting that into play. Thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Ms. Morgan?
Well, I actually will respond to something that Ms. Langford Fleming said, and that is the slogan that's used, just for the new board members, as a point of reference. The board did not choose that particular motto. It was done by the community. We hired an organization to come in to survey. They did surveys, they did in-depth interviews with community members, with staff, and with board members. And from that extensive sort of exploration of how people perceived the district and what we were doing, those three words came out. So I think this is really not a board decision, although if the board chooses to revisit it, it is a board decision, but it is actually a community. It was a heavily involved community exploration of the culture and the intention of the community with respect to Lee County schools. Well, in the spirit of saying goodbye to people, when I first came on the board, I was relatively new to the county, and I was certainly new to the school district. So I went around and I visited every single school in the district. And when you do that, you get, and as you all know, you walk into a school, and right at the front office, you get a feeling for what that school is about. And there were some disappointing experiences. For the most part, I enjoyed every visit.
For the most part, I, I enjoyed every visit, and then there were some absolute highlights. And then as the second part of my introduction, I went and visited the SACs in all of the South Zone, to see how principals interacted with the members of their community and their staff in a public setting where they were supposed to be talking about decisions regarding the school. And specifically, at that time, they were supposed to be talking about the money that's allocated to the schools, where the SAC is engaged in, how do we spend the money on programs, how do we support the needs in our schools? And at that point, there was a principal, and she became my standard for going around to schools, and that was Linda Mayer. She was so different in the way she expected her parents to engage in the decision-making process, how she pulled together all of the information she wanted them to have, how deliberative she helped them be in making decisions about what was going on in the school. I was stunned. I hadn't seen anything like it. And I ran for this board because I believed there were great people in this district who needed better leadership. But she became the person who was sort of my image of, you walk in the door, and the culture says, this is a warm, loving place, we, we are, we're eager to have you here, we're eager to have you engage, et cetera. And then I saw her work with the SAC. And ever since then, she's sort of been my touchstone. Linda, you know, I've heard this, or what do you think about that? And, you know, she moved from a school that was, that was absolutely in her heart, because she was asked to move to another school that needed her. And she made that school part of her heart, and, and it's a fantastic school, and raised up some great leadership in that school. And then she went on to become an executive director. So I just want to extend my personal gratitude to Linda for being sort of my mentor as a new school board member and ongoing. So thank you, Linda Mayer. She's not here, because I looked for her today, and I didn't see her. So those are my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
As was mentioned, I was, got an award, statewide award, but an interesting thing came out of that. One of the other recipients, other eight recipients came up to me. She won the Charter School Award for running charter schools, and she was from Orange County. She came up to me, and I said congratulations, I thought she'd say congratulations back, and first thing out of her mouth was, "Dr. Benir was my best boss I ever had." And she just went on and on and on about him. So I offered her a job here. I figured she'd want to come work here. I wasn't going to miss that. But that was very good. Kudos when someone you haven't seen for a while just wanted to make that point with me. On the international teachers, they can actually now stay here up to five years. They're committed for two, and we have another 30, it looks like, coming next year. And that's just a tremendous help for our system right now. Our district, as other districts all throughout the state and nation, are short teachers. There's a lot of reasons for that. Some people say pay, some people say this. The biggest reason is the number of teachers graduating from colleges are way down. So the force is just not feeding into the system, and we have people retiring, and with all the different things happening, it, it's tough. So we welcome them, and they were just, like I say, a great. And if you notice, they were teaching English Language Arts. That's expected. But there, we had several teaching science, several teaching math, we had several elementary teachers, and then we had several that were exceptional student educators, the SEs, and those are really hard to find. So we're, we're really lucky to have them, and I was glad we were able to honor them tonight. Before we close, Dr. Benir, do you have any?
I just have a couple of things to add. Mr. Persons, first of all, wherever we go, we're always recruiting. I will tell you just a quick story of the time I climbed the Glanteton. The guide was a physics teacher in Cody, Wyoming. I recruited him all the way up, all the way down, but he told me Florida has no mountains, so he had no, no desire. But we have to try, no matter where we go, no matter who we're speaking with. I run into people all the time who say, you know, I used to teach, I've settled, I've settled down, I'm now here. Have you ever thought about coming back? Have you ever thought about being a sub? Have you ever wanted to come back and volunteer in a classroom? Whenever we run into anybody who shows any, any desire to involve themselves in our profession, we should stop what we're doing, we should ask them and see whether we can get them to make a commitment. That being said, we have to change the way we talk to our young people as they identify this as a potential career. We have to encourage our young people into the teaching profession and show them the path and a way to an amazing profession, which may not be as rich in reward monetarily, but it is rich in reward. To Mr. Weisberger, I just thank you. As a former coach, a former principal, and a former athlete, you're right, you weren't always the most popular man on the field, but you kept control, you kept us focused, and a great ref, and a great crew on a Friday night football. There's no replacement for it, because it allows the game to proceed, and it really shows the kids talent, while you take a backseat to that. But you're never in the backseat, you're really in the driver's seat. And, and, but you, you make it look easy when you have a good crew, so I just want to thank you for that. And I think it's really important for the community to know that our officials are committed, and, and I mean, I know you can't commit long-term, I'm going to try to lock you down after the meeting, but to zero change in the cost and the pricing. I'd like to recognize Mr. Tomaszewski, who's here this evening, presenting a lot of awards. We've just redone it again, I don't know how they managed to pull it off in so, so short a period of time. But all the artwork in the building has been, and been retooled. Mr. Tomaszewski and all those amazing art teachers who spend countless hours framing and rehanging artwork to make our hallways very kids-centered is incredibly important. I touched on the 30 additional teachers, I was going to come back and add the fact that they are committed to two, but they can stay for five. And some people will sometimes say, why not more? We are limited in terms of the number of J1 visas that we are eligible for and they're eligible for, so that is a limitation to the program. And quite honestly, 20 to 30 a year is, is a lot of onboarding, so we'll continue to do that. In looking forward, thank you to the board again for this new structure regarding public comment. I will share with you that it's a little different, having only done it for the first time twice so far, tonight and earlier this afternoon. Usually you get some time to gather your steam and figure out all the answers that you'd like to have. By the end of the meeting, you're no longer in that position. So I will tell the public, if I'm not, answers aren't as deep as they have been in the past, it'll be because I have not, I'm truly intent on listening to every speaker. It doesn't give a whole lot of time to bring all the comments back, but I appreciate this, this community's patience with that. Looking forward, just a couple of quick things that I know you've seen or know about. We're going to, there's a groundbreaking coming up for the Fort Myers Field. Riverdale is also doing a groundbreaking for its renovation. The Cape Coral Junior Chamber of Commerce Junior Leadership Group will be in the boardroom on the 16th. And a reminder to our community, this is the beginning of our, our four-day weeks. The district will be closed this Friday, and because of the newest national holiday, it will be also closed on Monday, the 19th. But it will, it will operate Tuesday through Friday, and then we'll have a weird July 4th week too, but we'll, we'll figure that out. If you're coming down here, call ahead. If it's, if it's a Friday, just make sure we're open. There aren't many this year because of the way the national holidays fall. There are only two that will be closed on Friday, but I just wanted the community to be aware. Thank you very much for your time this evening, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Attorney Bruno, I'm sorry I skipped over you, but do you have any comments?
Just very, very briefly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Attorney McIntosh and I had the opportunity to attend the June FSBA conference, got really delved into the law. One thing that I did want to share is in support of the school district of Lee County, as well as Lee County after Hurricane Ian, the Florida School Board Attorneys Association has decided to hold its next conference in August in Lee County to show some support. So we're very excited to have them join us.
All right. At this point, our next scheduled meeting is on Wednesday, June 21st. There'll be a board workshop at 12:00 PM, noon. On Tuesday, the 27th, there'll be a board briefing at 1:00 PM, followed by a board action meeting at 6:00 PM. Having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 8:15.